Hey, it's good evening. And welcome to the regular select board meeting of June twenty first. Twenty twenty two. This will be our last. Select Board meeting of the current fiscal year. Next meeting will be in July. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start our meeting. Thank you, and. I believe all the orders have been signed. Selectman Donardo will not be joining us tonight. He. Is in the middle of a monstrous equipment repair right now, and for a farmer, that's not good news at all. So we just hope he gets his. Equipment fixed. The first order of business will be the approval of minutes for the last meeting. You have in front of you. June seventh. Twenty twenty two.
Need to accept.
Motion is made to accept and seconded. There any discussion amendments additions corrections or deletions from the minutes of June? Seven. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that minutes are approved. I will circulate them for signature. Are there any select board members that have any announcements to make?
Oh, well, okay. The Sharon and I gave out the Proctor scholarship for the Rutland Town Scholarship for a Proctor High School student. And Kurt and I gave out five Rutland High School students scholarships from Rutland Town. So a good time was had by all.
Beautiful.
And the food was great over at Proctor.
At Proctor. Yeah, and I won't. Speak ill of my fellow committee members. There were incidents.
Yeah, were incidents. Were there eating incidents?
No.
Both of us had incidents, I guess.
Always perfect.
We just like to keep her on her toes, right?
Rutland Town does have that reputation. To keep up anyway.
We did okay, Mary.
Any other announcements? Hearing none. Any member of the public who is not already included on the agenda, and I see a couple of guests here, and so I would like to invite. Uh, our new representative. Art Peterson. I'd like to invite him to table and welcome him to the town as a town representative. Come, come, join us, Art.
Oh, thank you very much, and thank you, Chair Chioffi, for the invitation. I spent the last couple hours going door to door in your great town up off the Quarterline Road. Um, and uh, got some great folks here, so thank you.
Well, we feel mutually. Thanks. Give us some.
Oh, I didn't want to overstep my bounds.
No, you're certainly welcome and.
Yeah, I, I. The last two years of my first term in office as a state rep. Representing Clarendon, Wallingford, West Rutland, Proctor, and a little bit of Tinmouth. Um, the first year was all on Zoom, which was beyond difficult. It was, well, I'm sure you've done some Zoom stuff. It's tough to legislate on Zoom. Um, this past session in twenty twenty two, we were able to get into the State House, able to have a normal session. And it, you know, it was productive. I learned to be a legislator, learn to talk to folks, learn to. Deal with all of the push and shove that goes with it. Enough so that I threw my hat into the ring for another two years, so. One thing I will say is there's some folks, the folks don't know how the district has been split up. They've heard, I'm sure, but some of that information just goes by. So I spent a great deal of time with with a number of folks in my daughter daughter today, talking about. What the ballot will look like. Because they've been used to voting, all of you have been used to voting one representative, you will now vote the two. So the towns, they'll be in this district, this buildings in this, my, our district. The, the, the three quarters of the donor, two thirds of the donor. South, west, and east will be. Combined with Clarendon, West Rutland, and Wallingford into the new Rutland District Two, which I represent. The other piece, the north, I guess, northwest piece. Will be combined with whatever adjoining Rutland District number it is, and I don't know that. To form the other. A one-seat district. So it's a little convoluted for Rutland Town, and folks don't know about it. So I spent a great deal of time. With a few people trying to go through what the ballot will like, because what your ballot is going to say is vote for two. So I'm, I'm one, there'll be three others. And so you will have a chance to vote for two representatives instead of one in November. Yeah, as far as I know right now, unless there's a, I, I'm a Republican, so I know we don't have a primary. As far as I know, the Democrats don't either, so there'll be no primary in August. It'll be the November ballot, in which you'll be asked to vote for two.
And that's particularly one of the reasons why I invited you in, and and Tom Burden, of course, is welcome as well. As, as will be the candidates for, I think it's five. Is it, is it five, Mary, in the city that we're combined with now?
Or two? I don't know, but I was, I was thinking the other two candidates are Ken Fredette and Dave Potter.
Right, and they're, and they're welcome as well.
Right.
Good, I'll let them know.
But I, I would introduce you, you know, by way of introduction, this is Sharon Garofano Russell, our board viewers.
Good day.
Mary Ashcroft.
Yes, I drive by your house a lot.
Yeah, you didn't stop.
And Kurt Hathaway.
I, Kurt.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you. And like I say, I'll be in and around, I'll probably come to some of your homes as I. As I go door to door, I enjoy that. I, I try to be as transparent as I can. I have some of my handouts here that tells a little bit about me. I don't know if it's proper to leave them here.
You can leave them on the table out there and.
Yeah, I'll leave them on the table if you feel like taking one. And what I've been telling people as I go door to door, these have my. My email address on them. If you want, I, I kept track of every vote I took this past year, voice, roll call. Anything we voted on, I kept track of what I did. And, and the reasons why, I used, reasons why I voted no is what I have on there. And so if you want to see how I vote. Simply take this, email me, and I'll, I'll email you the file that shows how I voted. And it'll give you some ideas of why, and then. You know, we want to discuss, if you could certainly get a hold of me. So I, I try to let folks know, I think it's my job to let you, frankly, I, I think. For you to make a proper choice, I need to let you know how I think and how I go. And, and that's what I want to do, so.
Great, Art.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
And you're welcome here anytime.
Yeah, and I'll just sit in for a few minutes, if you don't mind.
Oh, you can sit for the whole meeting, if you can bear it.
Well. I know much less more meetings can be long.
This is not really a heavy one, so. I see we have others in the audience who are not on the agenda. Yeah.
First.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, I'm Nick Pocket. Let me be. I got pronounced for you guys. Eight points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the committee that we've done thus far. Nine and forty seven, only be. Where's that? The permit ordinance. Received a fine. By violations.
So I understand. Oh, this is Nick Pocket. And. Is a property owner in the town. I understand that you had a successful meeting with the. Board of Listers.
Certainly hope so.
Well, I'll let you comment on whether it was or not.
I took it for a golf cart ride and took him around the property. They seemed to enjoy themselves.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the BCA has already been to the new house. Indeed, Davis and Howard were to the garage, and Howard was at the new house prior to this anyway. And then. Howard, I have five emails from Howard. One was just. A picture of the barn that we put up, that we gave the information to email back. But I never filled out an informational permit. Orance permit.
So the, this packet that you have here. This is, this is pretty heavy, really.
It's, I mean, it basically, it's my Act two fifty permit, what my wastewater permit, my state permit for the septic design. The. Amendment to the Act two fifty permit for an expansion. It also includes the. The forty-five acres that are on Post Road, as well as includes. The impervious material for the driveways, and actually three homes. We've only done two homes.
Okay. But this, however, is.
It's just simply saying that I did all this, and I would have been more than happy to fill out an informational permit if I knew it was something that we had to do.
Right. However, this is not an Act two fifty permit for the town of Rutland. This is for Mendon, correct?
Rutland and, and, I'm sorry, Mendon and Rutland Town. Because the mitigation area is actually on Rutland Town's property. So if you look.
Yeah, I don't understand that, that Rutland Town was, was a party to any Act two fifty.
So if you look, page. Basically, page twenty-three. I'm sorry about the handwriting. I wrote it real quick. The second last one. So, uh, where you could do twenty-four even, but if you look at the little map, the locust plane. If you see the swale, that for that, it looks like Texas up at the top right. That is actually in Rutland Town. And that's where the storage unit is, and that's where the seven thousand thirty feet, square feet of disturbance is proposed.
Okay, so the Act two fifty permit that you have for Mendon. Only includes the section. Of the storage park that's in Rutland Town.
In a.
But it doesn't include the other hundred and thirteen acres that you have.
No, it just has the designs for the three proposed houses that we got the Act two fifty permit. Is it, what they call it, a overall site plan? So if you look at, uh. We have all the wastewater permits. There's a picture that, I think it's the actual very last one. In that. Sorry.
Well.
The plan is. On twenty-one, I think, and that is where the proposal, and that is all submitted to the Act two fifty. That is part of the overall site plan. You can actually see where. The trenches are and where the storage unit.
Yes, I'd like to open it to board discussion.
Well, I guess I have a question first of all. Are you here to appeal?
I am.
Okay, all right. Did you submit anything in writing saying that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that in front of us?
Those in our.
Okay. Um, I think the next step would be for us to set up. A hearing, and this is a little more formal process than just coming in because you're not on the agenda and you've provided more information. Okay.
Yeah, and I've, I've done this before, I'm sorry. With you guys, the BCA, actually.
Or to civil authority, yes. Yeah, so I suggest we set a date for a hearing to hear the appeal.
Right, because it's a little much to do tonight.
At least you have the.
Right.
Because I can't, I could, originally, when I first bought the property and started to build on it, I came here to try to pull a permit and. Found out that there was no permit. So after dealing with this and Mendon, Mendon's like dealing with the state, so. Be tough to get a permit there.
Really?
So I was pretty surprised to hear there's no permitting in Rutland Town, which, you know, I was pretty excited about.
Well. That's because we have been relying.
I love Rutland Town.
On acreage of your size, we have been relying on the Act two fifty process because we are parties to that process, and then obviously we. Would be able to provide testimony or comment or whatever, and we haven't had any on any of this, so that's why I think we need to set this hearing and.
I understand.
And we'll go, we'll go forward from there. But as far as I can see, other than. Us satisfying our, our. The kind of informal agreement that we had, that you would provide the Act two fifty. And that you would meet with the listers, that you have satisfied what we, what we talked about.
So I'm sorry, what conversation was that?
We had a conversation with Mr. Pocket about, because he hadn't, in relation to the agenda item of the fines that were. That he was given for not filing the permits.
By, by.
It was because the listeners hadn't been able to assess the property correctly, as your job is.
This is, this is information that the rest of the board was not privy to, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, that would come up at the hearing.
I was gonna bring pizza. I just want everybody to be happy.
Appreciate.
Pizza's always welcome.
Okay, good. That's good to know.
What's, what's.
See that middle name there?
Pardon the board on, on setting a hearing date.
Well, I think probably half an, half an hour before our next race.
Which would be in two weeks.
In two weeks at five thirty.
Okay with that?
Bill, you have it?
So.
Is there anything I should bring that you guys want to see or look at or information?
No, I think this is quite sufficient.
Good, that's great.
Oh, well, we haven't seen it, so.
If you have any questions, my card's already called.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Nick.
No worries. Good.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Yeah, you do. And hiding, hiding behind wall.
Um, I'm with Mike, just here to answer questions.
No.
Hi, Mary Beth.
No, okay, Mary Beth. I didn't know whether you were going to come on, on the planning commission or.
Yeah.
Separate or whatever, and.
Also the mic.
Oh. Well, Mike, you're kind of ganging up on us tonight, aren't you, Mike? No, is there any other member of the public, either here or virtually or on the Zoom that would wish to address the board? Hearing none. We'll go to our committee reports. And Mike, you are first up. Mike Rowe, our recreation director and his entourage.
He's going up.
Let me get there. Let me get there. And then if they have to.
Okay. Yes, sweetheart, you're in trouble when he calls you sweetheart.
All you sweetheart, you're the only one. Um, so baseball is all done. I would like to thank a couple of our leaders for our coaches, Mark Kelly. Jeremy Carroll, Owen Murphy, Billy Canfield, and Brett Lazlo, along with our middle school baseball team, who helped do the, the. T-ball. So thank you to them. There are countless parents that helped, and there are too many to name, but those are the ones that took on the. Leadership role of organizing the teams and what have you. So very successful. Kids had a great time. The weather cooperated somewhat, but that part is, is moved on, so we're, we're good. And I just want to thank them. As always, there are people in this town that just give so much of their time, and we're extremely lucky. Uh, the fencing is done over at Dewey. It looks great. If you get a chance to look at it, um, the. Just so when you go over and look at it, we only had what's called the fabric, which is the fencing part. We did not do any of the poles. And any of that, because that would have been. Astronomical. So Skip Pradico did a fantastic job with that. They fixed our backstop. So much so that I'm having him fix our other backstops. Um, so that, because they, over time, the fence grows up. So and the kid sticks his hand at, you can imagine. So we came up with a little system, and it worked great at Dewey, so I also had him. To repair the fencing at our other two. Baseball backstops because they're kind of in the same situation.
Was this the sixteen thousand?
Yes, so that is on a depreciation fund. We ran into a little extra cost. It was originally a little bit lower than that, but. When you're trying to put new with old, there were a few issues that.
You're good. We've all signed it.
Correct, but I'm just letting you know that if anybody, there was some issues that we had to address, and I. I went and cleared that so that it would get done, and it looks fantastic. Um, so thank you to him and his crew. They've done a wonderful job for our town again. Uh, pools up and running lessons started on Monday. Monday is kind of like the separation anxiety day because the little kids are. In the cold pool and away from mom, and the lifeguard's great because there are a lot of, you know, nervous and screaming children. They did a wonderful job. So far, so day two was a lot, was a lot calmer today. But they did fantastic. Our school parties, it was nice to have all the kids at the pool. We had probably a hundred and sixty kids at three different events. Um, before school got out and that went off without a hitch. We were very lucky with the weather, the guards and everything just went. Very smoothly, so really good about that. Uh, the other. I have two more things. As one is, the fireworks are on the third, which we won't meet until then, until after that. So I just have to assume, like we always do, that the fire department is on board with the crowd there. I don't know if Chris is online or not. And that Ed is all set with our police department up there. I don't know when the city is planning to shoot them off. I don't know. So that might make a difference because if we're the only game in town, then we'll have a lot of people up at the park. So if we can just go to status quo. That we've done in the past, then we'll be all set, and I'll coordinate with Ed and Chris. For that. You okay with that? You look like you have something.
No, I, I was just looking at the calendar. I, I believe the city's is going to be on the fourth.
Which means then we will have an extra.
Ed's not shaking his head.
I know, Ed's focused on something, and that's fine, but he agrees with me all the time anyway. July third also.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they are. Okay. Uh, the pool will be open all day that day, so people can come on down, and we will be open for, the snack bar will be open. Uh, that evening if people want to come in and purchase stuff. So we do that like we always do. It's always a great day. Lifeguards love eleven-hour day. They just love that. So they love that. Then the last part that I have. Is, uh, two weeks ago, um, we have two very dedicated people in our town, Mary Beth. And Andy, who have graciously spent, volunteered their time to get our Act two fifty permit for our mountain biking trails. Set up in the park. That was given to you two weeks ago. I'm asking tonight that we have the board sign so that we can. Let the slow crawl of the state take over and hopefully look at it and approve it fairly quickly so we can get started soon.
Yeah, I'm looking.
So I, I did look it over.
Okay.
I, I, actually, I did something way early on, on a way early draft. And Mary Beth, thank you. Um, and Andy, thank you very much. Um, it looks fine to me. I think it's very comprehensive, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I move we approve, by the way, and submit it on behalf.
Motion made to approve the Act two fifty permit on the recreation project and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Five of us have to vote or sign it or just one, because we can authorize.
I think it's one.
So all of my.
Where is it?
Clued, Don's.
I have a whole desk, so I just packed it.
On behalf of the board.
I would like to propose that we. That you approve it, but there's a little bit more work that needs to get done, like a minor edits to the map. Uh, one of the permits is the erosion control permit, which can only be signed online.
Oh, right.
Would probably be better if we met a different time to actually do the signing.
Whatever you feel, this is out of my ballpark. So whatever you feel comfortable.
When does it have to be in, Mary Beth?
Just as soon as we can to get, just because it takes. Months to get all the permits through the state.
Okay.
Whatever works for. Can you help us navigate to that? If there's an online piece, you can't sign that. So could we do something before and. When, when, when would you all like to? Or does it have to be all?
No, I'm not. I'm leaving it into your hands. We're going to take the vote tonight, and the vote will be in the affirmative, so it can happen whenever you need it to happen.
I think we should, we could work with Phil and Mike to just arrange time for the, the people that are actually getting signed.
So how many have to sign it, I guess, is what?
I think just one.
Yeah, just the chair? I think that's right.
Okay, so then.
So the week you call Don in.
You can call Don in to sign it.
So, yeah, and I, I might even come in and do that, Mike.
Thank you. I'll give you some free candy.
So gracious.
Well, and, and the motion has been made to that effect, so is there any discussion on that again? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And there's none opposed, and so it's unanimous. And that's the way we'll proceed. Whenever you guys are ready, give me a ring and. We'll sign it, and thanks, Mary Beth, again, for your hard work on this.
That's a lot of money. People, that's about a five grand if we were to pay somebody to do it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Because we need to know that the two of them did that out of the kindness of their heart for the benefit of the park, so.
Well, Sharon has some, some. Lollipops in the desk. And I have a couple extra.
You don't have any lollipops left. I gave, got rid of them. And then Mike thought I was trying to kill him because I gave them to him.
Um, other than that, our secondary projects at the park are moving forward, which is stuff we do during the summertime. Regular maintenance, whatever. Sharon was up there the other day. I got the mini stamp of, sorry, the stamp.
You know.
I didn't mean it like that. Anyway.
His man is.
We're moving, we're moving along nicely.
Would you be quiet for two minutes, please?
Thank you, I am done.
Thank you. Um, I went up and saw the park, and, and I have to tell you, I mean. Don started in recreation before I did, long before, but. I know Dell and I and Ernie Chioffi and. Um, John Fleer, or Tony Fleer, we worked our butts off up there, but we certainly didn't. Have done what, what Mike has accomplished, and I hate to give him credit, but he has done a super job. He has done a super job, and I think that's probably. One of the most spectacular parks. For recreation that I have ever been in, and I've been in a lot of them, so. Way to go, Mike. You've done a good job, and you've got a good group of folks up there working with you and. You know, and I know Walt has worked with him and Byron did, and you'll be doing it now.
We had a mini conversation earlier.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're proud of Northwood Park. And I have to tell you, I was going to Maine one day, and we went through Northwood, and I said, I know where they got the name of that damn park.
Yeah, where did they get it?
Northwood.
New Hampshire.
Up in Northwood.
Well.
I go through that too, and that's where I came from.
Rod Galoppo and his wife, and my wife and I. Took trips to Maine, and it's tough for farmers to take breaks, as any farmer knows. So his brother Tom used to have to handle all of this stuff, and we'd go to Maine every year, stayed at the same place, ate at the same restaurants and whatever. Had a great time, and we did this for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years in a row. And every time we'd go through there, I'd see, you know, we'd go through the town of Northwood, beautiful town, and it's, it's quite a big town. Actually, it expands for. I don't know, miles and miles, and there's this beautiful fire department there and whatever. And so when we were. When we were doing the naming. That they, we. Well, this is, this is actually an untold story that was a secret for years until she found out about it. And, um, so the Recreation Commission decided that we'd leave this up. To the, open to the public to, you know, and they could submit slips in to, and, and we got a number of different slips in for. Naming it this and that and the other, and I put one in, I didn't sign it, or, and then I just said, Northwood Perd. Well, we had a commission meeting and everybody's. Well, we had a commission meeting and everybody's discussing this and I don't know who it was, Dick O'Connor or the one. Maybe it was Paul Horton, uh I don't know. Said, I like the Northwood Park. That's beautiful. This sits up. It's it's in the north and it's a beautiful park. I like that. And they picked it, so. And I never told them who it was. I said, this is, so.
I always wondered how it got its name.
That's where it came from. Northwood. Anyways, our park is in good hands. It gives us a great amount of comfort. To have as beautiful a park as that was designed to be. Be continue to be maintained in that kind of condition. So thank you very much.
Don't give him any.
Don't give any.
You know. Candy came from for your death.
They all did.
Good, thanks, Mike.
I lost my spot, Billy. I apologize. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Our next report is Chris Clark, our fire chief. You with us, Chris?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh the last couple of weeks has been quiet again. I I think four calls. I forgot to stop today and look. Um I can only remember four. So it's been pretty slow. Uh our new radios finally came in. That uh the ones we got the grants for, so we don't have them yet, but they're up at CVC getting programs. So hopefully they'll be here within a couple of days. And the new truck supposedly left Minnesota yesterday. I haven't heard an update yet. Um it's actually the third time they've told me they're leaving Minnesota, so hopefully it really did this time. Uh so. Hopefully next week we'll get all our stuff down there for them to mount and then uh it'll be here and in service, hopefully within a month.
Great. Now, do uh the select board members get the first ride in the truck or have you arranged that yet?
Uh no, you don't. You get the second maybe.
I had to try.
Thank you, Chief.
I had to try. I was looking to get a YouTube picture of Mary right in the front seat.
No, but there's a picture somewhere of me in the backseat of a police cruiser.
Ah, in the backseat?
Yeah, there's no handles back there.
Was there a screen?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Wasn't the canine vehicle, was it?
What'd you do, Mary?
I'm not gonna talk about it.
Uh oh. Does Ed know?
No.
I think you need to do a little search there, Ed. Yeah.
Anything else, Chris?
Uh that's all I got for you tonight.
Well, that's enough and uh good job and thank you very much and have a nice evening.
All right, thank you, too.
Our next report is Dave Sears, our road commissioner.
It's Skip Carey.
Well, if she wasn't on, oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at. No, you don't wanna jump over Carrie, Dave.
No, 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 no.
Carrie Clark. That's the trouble with putting you two together. I just see Clark and I put a check mark and I go right on. Carrie Clark, our town clerk and treasurer.
Make it quick.
With some great news, I might add.
Yes, it's the end of our fiscal year. I've given all the select board members and have a copy for Joe of the um estimated. Uh balance that we'll have left over at the end of this budget year and. Uh everyone did a fantastic job as they always do, staying within their means and we are ending the year with some. Excess money that will get put into our capital improvements fund.
So could you walk us through just what this is briefly?
Sure, please. I can certainly do that. It just won't make sense to people who don't have it in front of them.
Okay.
Um so you kinda see the um. The top of it says six nine, June ninth, because of the way our program works. Um we have reports that are um, so the budget status reports that the department heads. Used this week for their bills. Um those were actual numbers on the reports and that was from two weeks ago. Um today, when Susan and I input payroll and bills. That program doesn't get pushed over, so to speak. Um to the actual numbers, the general ledger, until tomorrow or Thursday. After it's approved, which is why we can't use those numbers in. Um those hard fact numbers. So what you see is um especially on, let's say, take the um. The right side of your front page. Um it's it's divided by department, police, fire and rec. And you're probably wondering where highway is. It's on the other page because highway money carries over is different than the regular de- department money. Um and and you're wondering where general is. It's on the left side, but we take the hit in general. Um based on what happens in the other departments. So what I had to do is plug in in each department what the report reflected. How much um revenue each department on the right side got in as of the ninth and how much um. How much was expended on that report um as of the ninth. So you'll see that. Um next to revenue and expenses under, say, police and fire and rec. Um the numbers that you see under expenses that say AP and PR. Those are today's numbers. Those are those numbers that did not get pushed over yet until tomorrow or Thursday. Um so we had to account for those numbers because we're spending those numbers right now. We're paying people and we're billing people. Um so you'll get a total in each of those departments. Um and then so right at the end there of each of those three departments, you'll see. If your particular department stayed within your means or they or they did not. Um there's, there's a couple, you know, departments that went over, but we anticipated this to happen.
Yeah.
This wasn't a surprise at all. Um but given that the fire you can see has thirty grand excess. It kind of, you know, if you think about it, it washes out part of the deficit of the other other ones. Because really, we have to look at this as um a um one town budget. And it's in one checking account. So we're we're just breaking up that checking account into pieces when we're budgeting. So really, we haven't run out of money. Because if you see on the left side, um again, we did the same thing for general over here. Um as of the ninth, on the left side, the um expenses reported out. Then we had to take an account um some, actually, I should have started from the top. I'm sorry. Um you know, we had this revenue and then. I'm going back up to the top. I don't wanna confuse you. Um so the reported amount for general was off of that report. The number that you see a couple lines down, the one percent income, that's. Uh the, that is our one percent local option tax that came in. Um but we haven't pushed it over yet to the general ledger. Um basically our checking, our checkbook register. Um we still have to reconcile that. So it's it's there, it's in our checkbook, but we. It didn't reflect on that report because we haven't pushed it over yet. So we had to. By the way, that came in well above again, so over the entire year. Um and I'm going off topic. Trying to do that. Um.
Not really.
We have.
Not really cuz my question was gonna be, you know, uh obviously you've you've shown on the right side with the other, what the other accounts do. And that we did anticipate that there would be some deficit spending in those accounts for various explained reasons.
Right.
Uh but that the general account is actually uh offset that, more than offset that and produced in there. And so the question would be, why? And.
And the why is because we, um the one percent, we actually received. Roughly around four hundred thousand extra dollars from that one percent that we were not anticipating.
And you, do you have a theory as to why that?
Um I'd like to think that it is our online sales of the town. Um because if you think about it, and this is just me in my opinion, really, take it or leave it. But we all know kind of how the rooms and meals tax is going in Rutland Town. It's not. I mean, you got ninety-nine, it's barely open. You got some hotels that are really not doing so well. Um so I'm thinking that. All that money must be from the increase in online sales. It's gotta be. I mean, I can't really, maybe harbor freight is included in that now. They don't give us a breakdown, which is really unfortunate, but I can only guess. So that's my guess.
Yeah.
It just makes sense to me, maybe.
It is pretty logical.
Yeah, so if you kinda scan through this, you'll see how this is set up, but it it. The overall ending of this is that bottom line number, I mean, we're. Almost a five hundred thousand dollar access, excess of money and. You think about it, four hundred thousand of that pretty much sort of came from the one percent. I mean, give or take, I mean.
Right, right.
Um the second page is the highway page and like I said, highway is is. Walt and Jason and everybody, Joey, everybody that. Contributed to staying on track of this budget throughout the year. Kudos to you because there were so many questions over this year and you can see that. While it looks like you ran out of money, that carryover really helped helped you out and you're you're okay.
So you'll be. We had budgeted for some of the highway carryover from last year to be to be taken, so. They didn't run out of money. We wanted to use up some of that.
No, I know that, but I know the personal conversations that I know that um you guys have had many. Meetings over the year to make sure you're keeping on track of everything and.
Right.
And and I think you guys did a phenomenal job and.
And to be, to be quite transparent, the the police budget at the top, which is. In deficit by fifty-six thousand one ninety-two, almost tracks exactly.
Exactly.
With the fact that we picked up our our police chief's salary, which had previously been paid by CFAC.
Got it.
And that was a decision that the board made for the benefit of the people of the town, so.
Yep.
Uh and a wise one, I might add.
Yeah.
There you go.
So there's no real big surprises here. We kind of anticipated it.
We're good.
They ran on track.
Good job.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie.
Um that was longer than anticipated and I did have a question, but maybe it can wait for next select board meeting. Yeah.
So now we wait until the close of this fiscal year and final figures and then we set the tax rate. So that's sometime in mid-July.
We've been doing it in July, I believe, and then your s- your signatures have been the beginning of August on that sheet. Um the tax rate sheet because right at the beginning of of August is when I have to do the tax bills. Yeah, yeah. Or another round. Um. I'm pretty much done, but the August, a- as we heard, the August election, the primary is coming up. And we all received postcards on if you wanted to have absentee ballots mailed to you. Not a new thing these days. Um so I've been receiving lots of calls for that. Um and here's the thing, we got our ballots this morning. And it's gonna look a little different because we're going into redistricting now. Um so we have some great ideas to make this very smooth transition. They don't know it yet, but I may um tell my my kids that they're volunteering.
Nice.
Yeah, because I'm thinking that somebody is going to need to be at the door for each polling place. Polling places have not changed. But the thing is, you need to know if you are in one of our two districts. If you're in district two or if you're now in district four. And that's what I'm thinking, that maybe one of my sons could tell you that and then you go to your. We're gonna have it very clear clearly done, so there's no surprises. Um and and then you'll go to your appropriate district within the polling place because the ballots are color coded. I thought that would be really, you know.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll make it easy.
Good job.
Did you wanna talk at all about the our backup plan that we talked about for the?
Oh, yeah. Well, um Don came in the other day and he had a very valid point. Given especially what it, nobody knows what's gonna happen the next day to any one of us. Um and so since Susan and I are currently the two only trained people. Um in this town for the new tabulator system. Um we were discussing an option to train two additional people. Two additional, maybe BCA members or BCA slash select board members. Um to be that second person in case something happens. You don't know if we're gonna get Corona. Let's hope we don't. Um but wouldn't that be awful if one of us or both of us. Got something or couldn't be there on election day and we were the only ones that knew how to run that, so. Um I think it's a good idea and we're gonna have to look into the next coming weeks to do that. Um I do know there's um uh elect- election training coming down the pike that they want us to take. So we'll see if that coincides with anything and we'll set something up, but I think it's a good idea.
Good. Always good to have a backup plan, but you never know when you're gonna need it.
You just never know.
We did that with Josh.
Okay.
A few years back because it was transition in the in the town clerk's office, so we needed somebody and and. He and I went up to Waterbury for a training.
He's a great idea. I don't know if it would have to be training from this, the guy that came and trained us. I don't know, I could reach out to him, but um really good idea.
Are you willing to do that again, just?
Sure. Probably a Zoom, I would guess maybe a Zoom training, if not in person.
I would hope it would be in person because you have to touch it and and stuff.
And I help you calibrate the old machines. I helped Susan. That was something.
I'm so.
Good.
We're good. Then they weren't so much better. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Agreed.
Good. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome. Super glad that you remembered me.
I'm, my apologies again.
I remembered you. Don didn't.
Going to have to introduce you in the future as the Clarks and then I will not be able to forget together on this sheet. Now, Dave.
Oh, sorry.
You're you're up. Thanks, Carrie.
You get us in tandem tonight.
And before I start, uh or before you start, the uh we've had positions that have been kind of. Well, they've been open and closed and opened again and we still have that one open, don't we, Bill? The the transportation council.
Joey is technically our.
Yeah, he agreed to, he agreed to.
Yeah.
To take it in the interim. Uh to give you the opportunity or or to give our new road commissioner the opportunity, once that person was hired and you are. Uh to fill that position. It's the transportation council and uh well, it's, you know, you're you're into the system that way with the state. If you would wish to do that, we'll appoint, we'll formally.
It's the, what, last, last Thursday of the month, the meeting is?
It's under the regional planning commission.
Yeah, it's that tag, that tag committee we have.
And it's a, it's a good contact position, so if you're willing to do that, we'll appoint you.
Do you wanna look into it first?
Would like to, yes.
Let us know by next meeting, and then, and we'll, we'll go from there. Okay, the floor is yours, guys.
Turn the first piece, piece over to.
We finished our roadside mow, and we just did one quick pass around, cause we share the tractor. It's up to mend, and now, um, we started doing some of our paving cleanup solution, that sort of thing. And Cheney Hill Lane has been reclaimed, and we gotta go over and do our part of it before it's paved and get that ready to go. And the Post Road Water Line, I guess Billy has set up a meeting for tomorrow morning, that's sort of a mess up there. But I guess we're all meeting up there tomorrow morning. And to see what's gonna transpire. And I have one more thing, I'm retiring August thirty-first.
Next, next year, right?
Sort of bittersweet. Have to, you know, at some point, draw the line.
You're not bold enough.
Did you draw that line, or did your family draw that line?
I did, I just, it's, it's just, I'm tired.
Congratulations.
Yes, indeed.
You've done a good job, force.
And thank you for hanging in there. Appreciate that.
It's in writing, if you needed in writing. We've, we've, I talked to Dave even before, you know, even considered the job, so he knew.
You kept quiet.
We've appreciated the fact that you've stayed on this long, too, I mean, you know, that was.
Thirty, thirty-two years.
That's, that's a beautiful career. And uh, there's evidence of it in every single section of this town, so.
But I'd be willing to, to help out.
And that's the kind of guy you are, so, again.
You heard it, Dave.
We, we talked, yeah, we talked in mere sixteen hours.
You know, their mic or whoever.
He's still, his number is on the speed dial.
I got it, I got it.
Gave me the phone, but his number was still in it. Thanks, Walt.
Thank you, Walt, for all the years you've put into this town, and thank you for stepping up to the plate.
Pass that over to Don if he needs it in writing, it's.
He wants to make sure, doesn't he?
He does.
You think he's tired out, huh?
Says June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, I Walter Tripp will be retiring from the Rutland Town Highway Department effective as of eight August. Oh, effective as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, sign Walter.
I thought it said twenty-twenty-four. I know, I know.
And uh. What's your pleasure board, you wanna accept this, or you wanna reject it?
I don't think we have much of a choice.
And you know what, he's earned it.
I think this board gratefully and, and very appreciatingly, uh, accepts your resignation.
Thank you.
Request and and thanks you from the bottom of our heart for your long service, your dedicated service to this town. Through thick and thin, day and night, snow and sleet, and storm and wind.
That's the post office, Don.
He's outdone them, I'll tell you that. Thanks, Walt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
So from my end, this is, as you know, I'm very short in here, so. I, I guess I need some direction from the board on some issues. One of them I've heard about four times in sixteen hours that I've been here, it's coming from everywhere. So, uh, Rutland Town, uh, Town Line Road and Connor Drive. There's a, a line of sight issue with a tree. Yes. Yes, yeah. Um, I've heard four different complaints about that in sixteen hours.
Complaints about the tree being there?
Yes, and Walt and I went up there today, and you really can't see to the north coming out of there, how people haven't piled them up there is beyond me, so. Um, I don't know, I know from my previous career that there is a way to, um, send a letter with a date, you know, you have thirty days to trim this tree back for line of sight. Or we will do it, and either send you a bill, or just we'll do it, however, whatever everybody's happy with, I don't really care, but somebody's gonna get hurt there.
Didn't we send a letter at one point?
Yes.
Okay, and you got no response.
And I know one.
No, Dave, in your estimation, um, is this able to be solved with trimming, or does the tree need removal? What do, what do you think?
I, I think you can trim it, you're gonna have to trim it up pretty high. But it's a spruce tree, it's not a maple or something, it's a spruce tree, so, you know, it's gonna be
Right on the corner of Connor Drive, I believe.
Yeah, Connor Drive and.
Connor Drive and Town Line Road.
On the north side of that intersection.
With the amount of traffic that Town Line Road gets, that's, that's a really dangerous.
And you, you can't see around that tree at all. Whether you're going north or south on Town Line Road, when you come out of there, you gotta be in the road to make the turn to see.
Mike, you have something to offer?
That's my neighborhood, and I exit that every day and creep, creep out, so I don't get punked.
He was number three.
From, or going, uh, whatever, south on that road.
Is it on town property, or is it on?
Private property.
It is on private, but if it's a danger.
If I, I gotta make a tight corner, you can't see who's pulling out. Because it's a spruce tree, so if somebody's off, that are trying to leave our development, and I'm probably, it, it is one that nobody has piled up. And it's, and it can be a challenge, just the way that the road is designed, and that that tree is. I think, just that, I think Dave's talking about in the city, they had an ordinance about Apex at the corner, and it could block by the site for vehicles, that's how they handled the, uh, I don't know, I'm not aware of any state in their California, this is about cutting trees and like that, but I think the city actually had an ordinance that talked about uh, the big shrubs blocking the trees and whatnot.
So would we be smart to have our chairman call these folks, since they haven't?
Let me, the property is owned by two folks who have passed. Okay, so, and I think there are three siblings, and I don't know what the state of ownership of the property, so it's possible the letter went and nobody responded, because I know one of them lives there.
Oh, it, it is occupied.
It is occupied, yeah, but I'm just explaining, nobody may be sure about who has the authority to respond.
Well, let's put it this way, I, I would be willing to go up and pay a courtesy visit. Simply knock on the door and introduce myself, and, and just see if.
That might be the answer, at least.
See if there's a possibility, and just do it in a nice cordial, friendly fashion, and uh, and, and my, I mean, my suggestion in the, in the past, when this thing had come up, was that well, you know, and I didn't realize that they had passed, uh, that, that we, that we could offer at our expense to remove the tree and to replant a tree of their choosing. Uh, and, and at our expense, o- on the property, and I, you know, I think that's the neighborly thing to do, really. And it, uh, and that's what I would propose to whomever is residing there. If, if that's okay with the board, we don't need a motion, I'll just do that.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, well.
You know, it's not that much expense to get rid of that tree.
I'll give you an answer, give you an answer whether, whether I'm successful or not.
Don't show up at the next meeting, we'll.
Or if I show up and I'm trimmed. In any case. Okay, that's one.
That's one. Uh, second on my list in our travels, of me learning all of these different streets, and I had absolutely no idea we're here. Uh, Dire Road.
I guess.
Yes, uh, we took a ride down there yesterday, um, somebody's porch is there. Um, not all in one piece, but somebody's porches in a pile, piles there. Somebody cut their porch out of their house and chopped it up into pieces, and took it down there and dumped it, so.
Well, my bad.
Yeah, every couple of weeks, there's another.
More.
More building materials, there are tires.
Fifty tires there, probably.
Is, is it within the town's right of way? I think we demoted that to a class four.
We figured it's just out of the right of way, I mean, it's hard, it's a, you know, dead end, not, it's a class four road.
It was class four.
It's, it's, I mean, I tried calling one of the owners, and, you know, it just went to a voicemail.
Well, JP is working, as second constable, is working on another um, unsightly nuisance, and maybe we ought to give this to him as well. Because if it's outside of the town right of way, but it's private property, and it's a nuisance.
He seems to be the junk enforcer now.
He's on there.
There he is, okay.
Is there, is there any? There any available place where a camera could be put to, to take a look at that particular site, so that we might be able to find out who was doing it?
Well, do you know who is doing it?
We don't know.
You don't know, yeah, you could put a game camera up there, but.
But I think. Several other places in town, we should do that as well.
I know, yeah, but JP is on the thing, and that's, that's what I would do, Dan.
As we've had that, you know, as Mary said, there's other places, uh, the cul-de-sac up, up on McKinley, I mean, uh, uh, from time to time, they've they've decided to either dump, sometimes it's a load of leaves, and that's not a big, really big problem, but other times it's not so slightly stuff. Well, okay, we'll refer that to the second constable, see what we can do.
The next one is, uh, Ox Yoke Road, Blair Enman. They apparently some years ago, two thousand-ish, you said?
Well, that's when we put the drop inlet in the culvert to the brook, I believe it's Kevin Mullins' property that the outlet goes on. There's a water system there, or something, it's like a three-corner little lot, I mean, we talked to Billy about it, Billy's been getting the letters or emails or whatever. But Blair Enman figures the outlet is plugged, I talked to you about this before, we had checked it out, the water's going through it. But there's riprap all along that little stream, and it covered the outlet of that culvert. We went over this morning and looked at it, and, you know, they just, you know, it's.
I mean, it appears to be all private property. Um, Walt said he doesn't know who dumped the riprap there, so is it the town's problem? Is it not the town's problem, that's, I mean, if it, if the town wants to take.
Is, what is the problem?
But Blair Enman says that the water isn't going through the drain, like, quick enough, or whatever, uh, uh, you know. Yeah, at, we, we took the cover off the, uh, basin, and the pipe is probably a third full, so it's probably when it was laid, it was like pretty flat, or there's something plugged in the end, seriously, so the water can't get out. So right now, it's sitting there a third full, nothing's running in it.
But is it on town property or on private property?
Think the basin appears to be, from what I can tell, it's just off the road, so it's probably, the basin itself is on town property. The outlet, I don't know if there was an easement, there would have to have been an easement, I would think, if it were run from there to daylight into the brook, there, I don't know if there was, but there's probably should have been some sort of easement or acceptance by the town of that pipe to maintain it. So the question is, who owns it, and who's responsible to maintain it? And whoever dumped, you know, a tandem load of six-inch riprap on top of it. Is that the town's responsibility to clear, clear that, that town obviously didn't do? So I guess that's, it's a, I don't know what, where to go, even go with that.
Is that your committee?
No, it's Joey Smith, yeah, highway, but I think, I think the town doesn't the state give towns the rights to maintain drainage above and below town drainage systems?
You got me.
There's, unfortunately, a lot of places in town where things like that have been done by the town but without benefit of putting an easement in place to allow the town, you know, some right to go in and repair. So this could be one of those, I don't know how new that is, it's possi- was it all part of a subdivision at one point? Do we know?
See, we, I, we did that in like two thousand, two thousand one, or something like that, was shortly after Byron got on. And we put that in there, and rather, there was an agreement with Kevin Mullin to go across that little corner, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, has anyone checked the land records to see whether anything is in there back then, about on either property giving the town an easement to go across it? Okay, so that would be one thing you could check and see whether there's any record.
I would say, uh, we'd refer this to the Highway Committee for that. And, uh.
How, how deep's the riprap over the, the culvert?
Well, we can't really see the outlet.
It's buried, but there's three feet, four feet, they, they've lined that whole brook, and being a brook, um. Is there permission to do it?
Yeah, that might be a different thing.
And that was since the project back in two thousand one.
The riprap is something recent.
Really? Okay, and we didn't do it.
No, we didn't.
Alrighty then.
So what are we doing?
I just referred it to the, refer it to the Highway Committee and then get a recommendation, uh, you know, and the recommendation may be to do nothing, or maybe to, you know, do nothing.
Okay, well, Blair Enman sent several emails to Bill, I guess, so I think it's do nothing is probably not an option, but telling him no might be the option, but that's.
Yeah, we gotta find out what, what, you know, what easement or wasn't done. Before we overstep our bounds.
Have you talked to him, Bill, about who put that riprap in there?
Walt and I have talked, and, and I think Walt's talked to, to him once, but we have not, we don't, we don't know, he, he hasn't indicated, he knows who, who has done it.
He has or has not.
He has not, but I think the property, like, we, it's on Kevin Mullins.
Kevin Mullins.
So, I mean, maybe we should be starting there.
Call Kevin and ask.
Maybe he knows who put it all in, and then we can say, great.
Yeah, at least remove it from around the culvert.
Yeah, okay. But, you know.
So should we have Bill call Kevin?
Well, I think realistically, what we should do is refer it to the proper committee, and it's a highway matter, so I, you know, I would, I would defer to Joe. And, and, you know, Joe may be busy, and if he wants to, you know, if he and Bill wanna get together, and Bill ends up with.
True.
We're gonna be able to talk about it real quick tomorrow morning, cause we're all getting together, so.
Yeah, okay. Bring it up.
Okay, and then my last and final thing, I gotta turn the hat around, we go to Sewer Commission, um. The Post Road Pump Station had an alarm yesterday, first day on the job, hit the ground running, piled by fire, whatever you wanna use. Uh, turns out there was, uh, quite a bit of sludge in the bottom of that, so it wasn't pumping. Uh, we called A-one, they came up, kinda got everything moving again. They figure there is about a thousand to two thousand gallons of sludge in the bottom of that thing, so we have them scheduled to come in and clean it. And then I'm kinda working on right now, like, uh, uh, a monthly inspection kind of thing, just back of it, and keep up on the maintenance once a year, whatever it needs.
Very appropriate.
I'm here.
There you go. Like to hear. Take hold kinda guy.
But, so, that's what we got, um, I'll be sitting here alone next month.
Walt will help pull that chair next to you, so.
I hope so.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Our next report is Barbara Noise Pulling, and I understand that she's not able to join us tonight. And, uh, with the board's permission, I'd like to take the opportunity, since we have this hole in the, uh, department report to, uh, take up A on the, uh, new business, since, uh, Robert Clark has been patiently waiting.
Sure.
You with us, Robert?
I am.
So, uh, if you would, the floor is yours, and. We're eagerly awaiting your report.
Sure. So we can maybe just kind of go through an update on several of the projects and where we're at with them for you all. Uh, sorry, I couldn't be there tonight in person. Um, a quick update on the town line road culvert. We signed the contract with Fabian back in, uh, January timeframe. Uh, they ordered, uh, materials and equipment. The structure itself is in the precast process right now and, um, based on the most recent. Email that I received from Ron, it's expected that they'd be able to start work in August, uh, to keep the work, road closure to a, a minimum. So that's the current schedule, uh, from him. It's a little bit later than we were anticipating, but, um, he's on, he's on target and, uh, things are being made at this point. So. Um, the, uh. We had hoped to have July fourth and then he just got an update today that, uh, that he was hoping, uh, not to get, but they're, they're behind schedule by about four weeks. So that's the, the current plan right now. Um, as far as Northwood Park, we, uh, we did complete the bid phase for that project. We sent a, uh, thank you, but no thank you letter to Jack Bowen, who was the low bidder for the work. Um, and if the town needs any grant, um, writing assistance, or if there are other opportunities that you'd like us to help look at, we can certainly do that. But. Right now that project, um, is, is back in the select board's hands to decide how to move it forward. As I heard Walt mention, uh, post road water construction is underway, um. That project has gone okay, uh, so far. Uh, they've completed, uh, the installation of the, the water main to within 10 feet of the existing pipe. Um, we have, uh, added a couple of water services based on the request from property owners who originally did not indicate any interest in connecting. Um, so, uh, I think everybody that could be served from that line is, uh, at least got a service that's been installed to the right away. Um, we should have a project under run on that, uh, just for you all to, to know. Um, it was a unit price contract. We included a. A few hundred yards of rock removal and, uh, one of the suggestions that Byron had had back in. In the original planning of it and what we had talked about was, uh, basically crossing the road at Chisana Drive to kind of avoid some of that ledge. And, uh, it certainly worked well. Um, there was still some rock that needed to be removed and part of the reason it's taken some time is, uh, Jack Bowen needed to get a hammer up there to be able to break the rock up. Um, uh, because he, he didn't have one available at the time that he encountered it. So. Um, but overall the project's gone very well. So even with adding a couple of services, uh, the project should finish under the, the budget that you all established for. Um. The major item on that is, uh, as of earlier today, we still had not heard back from, uh, the city of Rutland about turning the water on. Um, the, and doing a shut off. So, uh, there's a, uh, existing blow off that stops at the end of the water line on, uh, post road. In order to connect our new main and in order to do all of the required, um, pressure testing and bacteriological sampling and everything that's needed to make sure that the. Um, the water main is good. Um, we need to do a temporary shutdown of that line so that he can install a new valve and basically take off that flushing assembly. So that shutdown's needed. Once that's done, we would be able to tie in and then our line could be filled. It could be tested. Um, and we can take the required, uh, we, we can chlorinate it and then take the required sampling to ensure that it's safe to drink. Uh, but right now that's, that has not been, um, able to be worked through with the city. Um, so that's, that's kind of the only holdup on that. Walt mentioned there's some cleanup that needs to be done. It's certainly. Been Jack's focus to get the water line in up there and it is a bit of a mess up there. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at nine with the highway committee to go through a few items, most specifically a paved swale in that area and some other stuff that needs to be restored as part of the. The cleanup and restoration of the project. So we'll be going through that tomorrow and make sure that everybody's on the same page about what the finished product really should be. Um. But we certainly want to put it back to, uh, equal to or better condition than what was there.
Um, Robert, do you have any, do you have any timeframe or notification on that water shutdown? Uh. How much advance notice would? Homeowners get?
They would, they should get at least, uh, twenty-four hours notice. That's been the policy in the past. Um, but at this time I just have not received a response from the city as far as, um. Being available or able to shut it off on the town's behalf. I know that you have a operating agreement with them and I know I've reached out to him, Bill. Bill might have as well, but we're in a little bit of a holding pattern.
I think I'd have Dave, Dave Sears check with them, uh. And, uh. We'll get that resolved.
But yes, it should be, uh, minimal shutdown to do the work. Um, so only a few hours worth of work to do the tie in. They have all of the parts and pieces needed to do it. Um, and we'll provide, uh, at least twenty-four hours notice to the residents on, in that area that would be affected. It should only be a few properties. Um. As far as, uh. The other work that we have ongoing, um, we did complete, uh, the topographic survey and base mapping of the, um, sidewalk project to go from. Uh, down by the elementary school up to Chisana Drive. And I have, uh, a set of plans that we just put together. We finally got some right away information. Um, to be able to review with the highway committee. So hopefully we could talk about it tomorrow when we're all out there. It would be a great time to look at it. So I'll bring those plans with me. Uh, but basically we have a proposed alignment, some grading. Uh, we've worked out the, the limits of the retaining wall, which I think we'd all talked about a small retaining wall in a, in a, in a little spot there. And then some re-grading that needs to be done. There are a few, um. Potential easement items to be reviewed. Um, so I think it's, it's worth a conversation with the highway committee and then we can talk through, um, next steps on that. I know the, um, board was interested in, in revisiting, um, an item that we had talked about last year, the town water system study. Um, I had had a few conversations with, uh, drinking water state revolving fund, uh, project representative at the time. They were discussing internally, you know, how this might work, especially considering, you know, the, the, um. Review of all of the different fire districts kind of commingled with a, with a town water study. And then there were some changes in personnel, um, at DEC, uh, specifically in the drinking water, um, state revolving fund program. The, um, financial contact Celia Richel, uh, left for another position. And, uh, they temporarily filled a position with someone who already had a full-time job. So there was a little bit of a lag there and being able to get responses. Um, they filled that position in, I, I think January, it might've been December of this past year. Um, and at the same time, they opened up, uh, applications for their new fiscal year in February. So. The person who took that role was playing catch up on six months of work that had kind of been tabled, uh, along with getting completely inundated with new projects. As I'm sure you guys could appreciate. Um, they, uh, with the influx of ARPA money and other, other federal stimulus money that's going through those programs, uh, meaning. The drinking water state revolving fund and the cleaning, clean water state revolving fund, uh, they've received an overwhelming number of, uh, applications for new projects under this fiscal year. And they're about, I would say about a month behind their normal schedule, if you will, for. Releasing their intended use plan, which is where they outline how they're going to spend the available money that they have. Um, I don't have any new update at this point other than, um, I think the, the project that, you know, the Rutland Town Water Study, the review of the. Fire districts is, is going to be fully supported by those in the drinking water program. Um, based on the most recent conversations that I've had with them. And at this point, we're really just waiting. For some guidance on what's available for funding to make sure that it's the same. Level that was, uh, available last year. Um, so. Maybe with that, I'll just pause and see if there are any, any questions about that particular item.
I do have one.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, Robert, would it be worthwhile for us to put in a letter or some kind of formal request? Um. To, so that we're holding our place, um, with our handout for some of that pot of money. You mentioned other. Projects that were being reviewed. Um, i- is that for the same pot of money that we were looking at?
No, so that, that, um, the projects that are being reviewed are a little further along, Mary. Those are specific for construction. And, um, and so they have different pools of money. They have, um, they basically have a three-step process i- in the SRF programs. It's step one is planning. Which is, uh, what we would be looking to do for the water study. Last year they had offered that at one hundred percent forgiveness. Um, this, I think we had talked about this before. They don't. They don't do grants. They do forgivable loans. So that's where that funding was at. Based on the conversations that I've had with them, they expect that to be the same and they expect to have a larger pool of money available to you. Uh, but that funding bucket doesn't open until, um, until they release their intended use plan with this, with this fiscal year. So there's no. Advantage to, uh, to pre-applying, if you will, for that particular, uh, thing. Um. A- and then they have, um, step two, planning money, which is for design and permitting. Those are projects that have. Gone through the planning phase and are ready to kind of tackle, you know, going through the state regulatory process and getting permits and completing the engineering design. And then step three, which is where they got all those applications. That's construction money. Those are projects that. Are either finished with their design and have their permits or they're very close, um, to getting done and, and are seeking money for construction. I think a lot of municipalities put applications in just to start it. Um, their typical timeline is about two years to work through that program, program from. Planning to construction, um, and that's for a straightforward project. If you were trying to do like a water line replacement or something of that nature, it takes about two years to work through their process. Um, so I think a few municipalities. Said they just throw their hat in the ring and submit an application and maybe they're not as far as they need to be to actually get construction money. But in either case, it sounds like they've had a significant number of, uh. Applications for this particular year.
So in our particular case, Robert, with the, you know, with our town water system study, you. Do we have to have a, a very specific grant proposal ready or is it just by letter of application? And what I'm thinking is that. We would task you with getting that particular, whatever it is, ready without date so that as soon as A and R gets their work done, we can drop that on them like immediately.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Don, because that's actually where things were at last year. I think the last time I talked with the board, we, we were dealing with a couple of individuals in. The, the drinking water and groundwater protection division related to. The scope of what this work would look like. You know, it, it's a unique proposal. It's not something that they would see all the time and, and then as I mentioned before, there were some staff changes. It wasn't. Just the program manager from a funding perspective. They had some changeover, um, with the staff that would be reviewing it. But we've actually developed, um, you know, a, a, I, I call it a proposal, but it basically it's a written scope of work for this study that they, the state is generally in agreement with. That would be submitted through their online application process with, uh, with the loan documents which we had submitted as, which we have drafted as well. Um, there's really no. Financial information or other background information that needs to be provided with this because it would be the formation of a new system. Um, so it's kind of in the queue and as soon as they give us some more information about what materials need to go with it, we would be able to very quickly repackage that for Rutland Town.
But. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other board members have questions? This point?
Yep. No, we've got one more.
Continue on, Robert.
Yeah, sure. The, so the last one to talk about is the kind of three acre stormwater assistance and I.
Oh, you're kidding me.
I came to you all and, uh.
You wanna leave it?
Sorry about that. Um, I came to you all before and we had talked about, you know, potential funding opportunity for three acre stormwater projects, um. And at least from my perspective, the, where that was left was. Um, we had talked to several municipalities about this funding opportunity. It was through the clean water state revolving fund. That's the sewer side of things, if you will, with the state. Um, and essentially what it was is a, an opportunity for municipalities to, uh, seek forgivable loans. Um, that would allow for design and permitting to be done on commercial properties. Um, related to three acre stormwater sites. And I, I think we had identified several three acre properties in Rutland Town. Um. None of the municipalities that we work with regularly at Otter Creek Engineering, um, have pursued this funding through the state. For two reasons. One, there have, there hasn't really been clear guidance on. How the forgiveness would be written in a way that it would be guaranteed for the town, you know, as a private, um. Landowner, there are requirements that they would need to go through, but basically this is kind of a workaround that the state was trying to do. To get access to private landowners, commercial landowners, um, to, to state and federal money to deal with this kind of pending permitting process. And so most of the municipalities, Rutland Town included, are not willing to take on a loan, even if it's got the potential for forgiveness. If there are no guarantee with it. So that was kind of the first hang up, um, and I'm not aware of anyone else that's, that we work with regularly that's, that's tried to use this program. At the same time the state was doing this, um, they got an influx of money through ARPA and other funding, federal funding sources. They've also started the, um, the green schools initiative, uh, program, which is a funding program specific to three acre schools. And I think I had mentioned to you all that that's kind of the same process, uh, essentially work through design and permitting. And then in future. Fiscal years, the hope would be that maybe some construction money or construction subsidy would be available for the schools. That process has gone really well. Um, so I'm kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern to see if they're going to update. Um, with the intended use plan for the clean water program, a, a better mechanism of getting money to, to the towns. But right now I. I just, I'm not comfortable recommending Rutland Town pursue that. We certainly could set up a meeting with you all and Tom Brown and talk through the specifics. Uh, but at least based on the conversations that I've had so far, I, I think. There are too many moving parts and pieces for, for me to feel comfortable with it and at least hearing the conversation with you all. Uh, several months ago, you know, you wanted something firm to know that we were going to be going forward in a good direction. And I, I think this one's. Just waiting for this, this most recent fiscal year to see if they've made some changes.
So we want more than trust me.
Yes, no, exactly. I think that's exactly how I would put it, Don, and, and we haven't really gotten that in this program. The water side of things is quite a bit different. They, they've written. You know, in other instances, they wrote a little letter that said, this is the, this is the process. And if you follow these steps. You're guaranteed to qualify for, for the forgiveness that we've outlined in your loan. Um, I just haven't seen that with this particular program with the three acre piece. And it's complicated because you would be doing work on private properties. There's a lot of legal things that need to be worked out. And I think that's the, the challenge that the state was running into. The idea is really good. I, I really like the idea of them trying to get money. Available, um, especially when you, you consider the COVID impacts on businesses and. Um, and just the timing of this regulation related to all of that. It's, it's kind of unfortunate from that perspective. So that's my update. I, I hope to be able to give Bill, they, they had indicated in early July that the intended use plan for fiscal year twenty-two would be available. So I hope to be able to give Bill a better update on both the water and the stormwater piece, um, and, and what you guys may or may not be able to do.
Did, uh. Just as a, uh, as a quick, as a quick question, uh, in terms of the. State. Getting more specific on the funding for that three acre. Um. Program. Uh, is there any? Is there any thought to modeling it after the agricultural program? Because the state, you know, that they had to get into this. If, if they really wanted to mitigate. In agriculture, they, they found a way to get money through to, to farms.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is kind of the infancy of this program, you know, it's, it's their first attempt at, at finding a workaround to get money to commercial businesses that need it for the planning and design. I mean. That just the engineering alone can range from, you know, five thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars in a hurry, depending on the size of the site and the complexity of it. And the level of detail that's needed on the survey. So it's, it's, it's a real expense on property owners. I think we had talked before. About the pending fines, you know, if you do nothing versus, you know, having to go through. So there's some pretty substantial fines for not being compliant with the three acre rule as well. Um, but I don't think, Don, to answer your question, I, I think that. Where a lot of the municipalities were hung up with this particular funding source is that lack of. True commitment and, and how that really works when in some cases you could be talking about ten or more. Individual property owners that all have different goals and objectives of the three acre permitting process. So I, um. I'm, I'm hoping that they found a better way to just. Get the money into the town's hands and then allow the town to manage that. I think that would be a better way of doing it. Um, but I, I don't know if that program will really allow them to do that. So we'll have to see if they're able to make changes with this. Intended use plan and, and depending on what they come up with, you know, Otter Creek Engineering will be providing comment to them during their open comment period on, on both of those applications.
Any board members have any questions for Robert?
No, I appreciate the rundown and summary, Robert, and thanks for. No, I appreciate the rundown and summary, Robert, and thanks for staying on top of it.
Certainly. And um sometimes you blink and you miss a month or two here. So thank you for inviting me to come back and give you an update and for the opportunity to continue to work on these projects with you.
I doubt we'll forget, but if we do, you remind us.
Uh, I am the third clerk on the list tonight. I don't know.
I guess that's why we have you in the department.
I think so. It worked out pretty good. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Have a good evening.
Have a great evening.
Take care.
Our next report will be from Ed Dumas, our police chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. So calls for service last two week period is we have ninety nine calls for service, uh five of those are traffic stops. So we're at ninety four, which is uh I think the most so far this year. Summers here.
Yeah, lots of activity south of the city.
If you notice location, most of them are come from U S Route seven in Holiday Drive.
Surprise, surprise.
The other thing is this the offense things we crimes we could, we could charge as criminals, not that we could find all the people who did the crimes there. Uh, we petty larcenies from vehicles. Again, people lock up your cars. Don't leave anything in them you like. And that would turn into a lot of work for us and will make a lot of victims in the town around. Especially don't leave your cars in there. Don't leave your some people like to keep their uh titles and whatnot on the glove box, which makes it really easy for people to sell them without your permission. Next was grand larcenies, uh then retail thefts, operating out of consent, a whole list of uh I guess the seven top one nine, top ten offenses, excuse me, that we had in the town this last time. Uh, also, as of this time, as of right now, six nineteen, we're at seven hundred and five complaints in the south end of the city on the list of things that we did. Currently, we're on the way to have probably over sixteen hundred calls for this year alone, which is more than we've ever done.
So that projection, that projection that you had at the end of the three months is holding true.
Yeah, it hasn't gone down. Uh, uh, May, May was hundred and twenty three. March was one fifty eight. It'd be interesting to see the correlation between the uh number of hotel or number of rooms are rented at the Cortina and then the amount of calls we get in the south. And I probably could work that out.
Did you get an update on?
I did. We're at a hundred. Mary, I give that to you. I gave Mary, I think it was a hundred and twenty six rooms that are running out right now. Now I gotta write.
He said a hundred and twenty six?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty six rooms. Go ahead. That's the latest list. Like that.
Yep.
That's about it for me. The other thing, I guess, uh I believe Deputy Washburn warned you folks, uh, the latest thing from the state as far as uh the fines that we for uh motor vehicle violations, speeding violations, they lower the amount the towns get now.
Sure, they take money away from our, from the town and they don't do a darn thing about south of the city, except battle us with BS.
We did have a meeting last week. Uh, Don was there myself at Rollin Inter- Intermediate School where Mr. Sean Brown, uh DPS Commissioner was there. Uh, members of the city, uh, police, Rollin Town Police and uh Merrill Air was there. Somebody else there.
Quite a few different agencies.
Sheldon represented the police.
And then who's that? Who's MC uh?
Dave Walk.
Dave Walk was MC.
Well, I heard you did an excellent job. I heard from a couple of different agencies that you did an excellent job. But the sad thing is the state's not listening. As long as they can pump money in, even though they say they're not, you know, they don't support the nine hundred dollars a week that they're each getting. And I mean, this is crazy. This is crazy. And you know, they're warehousing people. I mean, they're not helping people out.
So the rules are supposed to change uh July first. So that right now the rules are very lax. There's nothing mandated by the state or anything of that nature. They rely on the hotels themselves to make up the rules that they want to force. I suspect there's some guidance from the state. Not much, I guess.
No.
No.
This point. We'll see what happens. Uh they are lowering the numbers steadily. We're down to a hundred and twenty six rooms. Our highest point was a hundred and sixty two rooms rented with only a hundred and fifty rooms to rent. Wait, how that, how that worked out?
Right now, we're just to let you know, we're we're planning a meeting. Uh, Ed's going to set this meeting up with the with JP uh uh as our health officer and myself and set a meeting up with Anil Sachdev and the lit program if they choose to be in it as of July first to let them know that we intend to see that rules are enforced. And uh
With a, yeah, with a permission from the board, I'd like to I I think there's members of the the lit team that want to see some rules enforced, which means undesirable people that do undesirable things at the Cortina Inn can be addressed and taken care of, and they can be moved out of there because they, we don't need. I don't believe they're homeless. I believe they're just taking advantage of the system and the folks down there. And there's some truly needy people down there that do need assistance and need help and look forward to everything the state can do for them and what we can do for them. But there's that small percentage that needs to be addressed. Whether they can do it. Cause my hands as an officer are quite tied up at this point.
One, one of the things, for instance, that we talked about, um, just to let you know is that the uh the Lit program has been asked on numerous occasions since this program started, has been going to one and a half years to provide washing machines and dryers in the facility for those for those residents that are there. I mean, it's almost impossible to have a living situation, whether it's transient or not, where where you don't have the ability to wash your clothes. And they have, well, at least by their actions, they have refused to do that, even though it's a very small cost in comparison to the amount of money that's being paid into the program. So that's one of the things that, one of those small things that we could address uh that makes people's lives a little better down there. And also saves because they, in order for them to get their clothes washed, they gotta well, they gotta come up with enough quarters and then they've got to get transportation if they don't have it into the city and into a laundromat and get their clothes washed and find enough quarters to put in the machine and then get back. And it's just um not a good situation. They if, you know, if it's a living condition down there, then they should have the ability to wash their clothes. So.
So I have a request um that meeting that you're attempting to set up. And that is you let our town council know and ask him to weigh in on any do's and don'ts. Because we do have pending litigation and I wouldn't want to be working at cross purposes.
And I will. And I was going to address that with a short executive session tonight over conversations that we have had. So if someone would make that motion at the appropriate time. Anything else, Ed? And again, um, just to reiterate what Sharon said, Ed did a fantastic job. I thought we all did uh admirably. Uh, we weren't getting a lot of cooperation. The state's reluctant to provide information. I don't they were not transparent at all, even in giving us the amount of money that they're paying per room and the amount of money that they were paying the lit program per room. They would not give the figure. And I can't for the life of me understand why not when anybody can call any hotel in this city and find out how much a room costs. And it's our tax money that's paying for these folks to be at that facility. We can't get a figure. And we haven't gotten a figure even under the foyer request that our attorney has put into the state, DCF. As of yet. I'm going to still remain positive if I can. So um it was a frustrating meeting. There weren't enough, really, there weren't enough questions asked. And the questions that were asked by the mayor and the questions that were asked by me is I'm representing forty two hundred people and the mayor is representing fourteen thousand. So that's twenty thousand people that we were representing and there wasn't one there wasn't one quote in the paper from either one of us as to the questions that we asked the commissioner to answer. What gives? I mean, we're we're asking the state to be responsive to our community, to provide the needs that that facility is putting upon us. That's all we're asking.
Done. When they, when they did answer or when they stated different things, they stated that every homeless shelter in the state of Vermont was consulted first. They never once called the Ovendore Mission, not once.
No, they didn't.
So.
And your daughter did a fantastic job of indicating the services that were available.
Well, you know, my thing is this, that there are poor folks out there, like Ed said, that truly need help in housing. They don't need to be warehoused at the Holiday Inn. And and I'm sorry, it's warehousing. I mean, it's disrespectful. And little children are living when you can't even get your clothes washed. And if they don't have cars, they have no place to go and get their car, their clothes washed. They don't have the money to buy. So, I mean, what we take for granted, they don't have. So I mean, I think it's a disgrace what the state's doing. And you know, warehousing people is not not the answer for helping people out. Just out of sight, out of mind. Okay, we'll hand out money. We'll we'll hand out money and that'll take care of them. It'll shut everybody's mouth. No, these are human beings. They need to be treated as human beings, not to be warehoused. You agree it?
As a, as a follow up, I, you know, I intend to have some conversations with Mary about the inter municipal committee potentially meeting with the mayor and and uh to try to have a follow up meeting with DCF and maybe we could on a one to one or basically a one to one basis, uh, get some of our questions answered. And I, and I think if we work together that way, we might have, we might be able to have a little impact on them. Because Sean Brown is not a, you know, he's a decent guy, but he's he's part of the bureaucracy. So you just, you know, you've got to keep pushing on it a little bit if you want to get results. So I think we just have to keep working every single avenue that we have to try to solve the problem. In any case, uh, a- again, Ed, uh, you know, and Ed put a lot of time and so did I. As a matter of fact, statistically, I had, you know, I had the numbers and it's always good to go into a meeting like that, having your facts straight. It didn't seem to matter too much to them. Uh but you never know. You never know. That's why I I say this follow up meeting could be very important. And uh but there was a lot of time put in and a lot of effort put into organizing this meeting and uh it just didn't seem to have the impact, did it, Ed? I mean, it really didn't. And unfortunately, uh, Mr. Brown lives in Orange County, so.
I did ask Mr. Brown if he had a hotel up there. We had some guests for him. He like, I mean, he said it was none in his town.
Oh, yeah, how convenient.
Or, you know, I had suggested to him that we have some, a couple of available rooms down at the Cortina that he could stay longer and answer a lot more questions and we'd put him up down there for the night. But that didn't go over too well with him either. Oh, yeah. Anyways, he had to get back because he lived in Orange County and he had a long day. So unfortunately, uh you know, the meeting had to come to a close. But, you know, we were, we were willing to sit at that table for as long as people had questions in the audience and answer them.
But seeing when human lives are involved, he would take the time. Sorry, has to travel so far.
How long was the meeting?
Two hours.
Two hours, six to eight. And it actually went a little bit longer.
Well, Kurt and I were up giving out scholarships, so that's where they were.
No, and then there were three people at the end that that were lined up to to ask questions. And it was after the time and Dave Walk graciously said, well, we're going to close the meeting now, but you three people can come up here on the stage and and ask Sean Brown your questions privately, which was fine. And uh and that was it.
See what the regulations are come July first.
Yeah.
Maybe you were heard and maybe they'll be reflected in the new regs.
We can only hope. Thanks, Ed, and and thanks for your participation. Anybody else have questions? So right now we have pretty much two hundred, two hundred people in the town of Rutland. Uh, I'm told there were fourteen dogs down at the Cortina Inn. Uh, Ed tells me that it's at least fourteen dogs. I asked the town clerk whether they're registered and none of them are registered in the town of Rutland. So however, the residents down there are registered to vote in the town of Rutland. Because apparently they're using motor voter and other access points to register. Which is a great democratic thing. In any case, thanks, Ed, for your report. And next up is John Paul Fagin, our health officer, Public Safety Building Clerk and Second Constable. Good evening, JP.
Hi, good evening. How's everybody tonight? So um I'll start with the Public Safety uh Building. We are on schedule. Uh, we're we continue to refine the drawings. I can give you some dates so that you can look forward to it, but during the months of July, we're going to be working on doing cut sheets and working with fixtures and equipment within the building. We expect the drawings would be complete by September nine of this year. We're leaving a a little open period for all of our professionals to provide final comments. The drawings will be a hundred percent by um October first, and we expect to be able to put it out to bid October first with a thirty day due date and a contract award date the first of December. Um, as far as our fees so far, we're on track with the original estimates. The um I would like to thank Chief Washburn. He was successful in obtaining a very significant grant for uh our public safety building. And I believe it's about the grant of about a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And really, he couldn't have done that at a better time for us because we're looking at the pretty much final plans for the security system, the bulletproof glass, that kind of stuff for the station and coincidentally, it's around that same amount. So really, uh, Chief Washburn has been able to provide that entire system to the town at no cost to the taxpayers. That's pretty neat. The other thing I I need to talk to you about, I gotta switch hats, go into Second Constable. I sent photographs to the board of the property on Perkins Road. Really, the photographs can serve as my report because it's obvious to me that the town has probable cause that the condition of the property violates our public nuisance ordinance. And so I'd like to request that the board schedule a hearing, give the property owner notice of the hearing and that we consider ordering the property cleaned up and failing that. And I don't expect that the owner will clean it up, that the town will clean the property up and then lean the property uh for the amount of the cleanup. We'll have so many, uh, a certain time period that we'll have to commence suit on that lien to foreclose on the property. And we might have to sell the property in order to satisfy our lien. That's the long story. Maybe the property owner will realize that the cost of cleanup probably exceeds the value of the property and we can move this along. But we do have to start the formal process so that that conversation can begin.
So I move that we, in fact, So I move that we in fact do that.
Uh JP, do we have to start with a notice of violation or have we done that?
Well, we actually, he's in violation of an order that uh the board issues that as a Board of Health. But it was Kevin's suggestion that we just um put that on hold for a while and proceed as a violation of our public. Nuisance ordinance because these types of situations are coming up more and more in town and. It was his suggestion. We have a blueprint for how one of these matters should be handled. So um I I would ask if Bill could just check with Kevin on the time requirements for the notice to the property owner and that. The board schedule at its pleasure a hearing and at which time I'll present to you the photographs and I'll. Uh probably provide you with a video of the surrounding neighborhood so that you can clearly see it. It violates the ordinance.
Okay.
You you were aware, were you on earlier to hear about the dire road problem as well, JP?
Yes, sir. I did put that on my list and um I'll be working for the town over the next couple of days. I'll make it a point to. Address that situation.
Good, so.
So do you need a motion from us to proceed with a notice of violation or is that still yours to do?
So I will be issuing the notice of violation. I'd like to do it in conjunction with a notice of hearing. Um so if you could, I'll draft a a notice of violation and then when you decide on your here, when you want to have the hearing, we can send those out together.
Okay, that makes sense.
What's a timeframe? Uh what timeframe should we allow? Bill, you, we've got a hearing. A half an hour before our next meeting. Uh you want to make it an hour before and?
I don't think we're going to have time. I think I, my guess is it's got to be more than two weeks or at least two weeks. And I, by the time the landowner gets our notice, I think we've got a. I mean, we should have Bill check, but I'm guessing the next meeting, the after that would be the earliest we could do it.
I I think you're right about that, Mary. I think you're looking at not that your next meeting, but the one after that.
Yeah, four weeks.
Yeah.
So we could do it.
Four weeks would be July.
So we could do it.
July nineteenth, I guess.
Yep, so we could do it five thirty on the nineteenth.
As long as it complies with the notice requirement that we have to give the landowner. If not, and we have to wait two more weeks, that's okay too.
Is a half an hour enough time, Bill? You think? I don't know. JP, do you think a half an hour is enough time for a hearing?
I do, Don. Did you hear me?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
So let's schedule it for then nineteenth. And uh to be. As an addendum, JP, uh you know, of thanks to to Ted Washburn. Um it should be noted that uh Bill and he worked pretty closely together to do that draft letter, so. I didn't, I didn't want to take, I didn't want to take any of that credit away from Bill. They worked pretty good as a team. Uh there was an original draft and then there was a final draft sent. And also to be transparent with the people since we had announced that Congressman Welch had put this. This grant in to the House Appropriations Committee. It was the House Appropriations Committee that. Uh they, they shaved it down from two point one million to two hundred and thirteen thousand, so that's actually what we got as the. If the Appropriations Committee comes through, and we think they will with this grant. It's two hundred and thirteen thousand at seventy five percent match, so that's how it comes out to the hundred and, what did you say, JP? Hundred and fifty six?
A hundred and fifty six, yes.
So in any case, the the actual grant that the town will receive will be two hundred and thirteen thousand, so. Well done, guys. Again, um little disappointing that we didn't get it all, but hey.
Every little bit helps.
No, beggars don't be choosers. You know, we're really happy that the, that the congressman uh. Found us worthy of that. It all helps, so. Anything else, JP?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, Bill Sweet, you're up, our town administrator.
Good evening.
Evening, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Uh so not too much left. Uh the packet items, we have uh one item for new business already. And then a couple uh for information purposes on there for you. Um do you have any questions on those or?
I don't have a question, but I have a suggestion and I'd like to bring it to the board right now. Well, first of all, I'd like to bring it to you. We've got one on here, board to consider meeting room requests from Fire District Five. We've.
Yep.
We have a, we've developed a policy for requests for this room. I I'm trying to uh clean up the agenda as much as we can. And it came, it came to my thought and I went over it with Bill and asked him. Uh if he could handle these on on his own. I mean, it's simply a matter of the people have to comply with one, two, three, four, five. And if they do, then we allocate the room. You know, it's not a big deal. It's not our meeting time or whatever. And I would like to put this in the hands of our administrator so that we don't have to deal with this because it's. I don't, I don't, I just don't feel there's any need for us to have to deal with it.
Well, I think it's, it's the people's town hall and. And being it's the people's town hall, if Bill can handle it, we don't have to. Carry the load. I mean, as long as it's town business, it's town people, I think. And if it's an open spot, then they should be allowed to use it. It's their town hall.
And I want to ask you, Bill, formally, you don't have any objection to having this put on you?
Oh, that's, that's, that's easy.
But I just suggest we take a look at the policy to make sure we can delegate that authority.
We we may, we, I I. Too late, but we we may need to add like, or their designee to it or something like that, something simple to the policy.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We don't make sure we're doing the correct thing.
For the purposes of this request, if you're ready to move on it.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, but does the board have any objection to that? So let's do, let's do that. Check it out, Bill.
The only thing, Bill, when you, when you give these out, if you just write it up, you know, up on the calendar and block it out.
So we know.
When we're trying to plan stuff, we can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just notify us.
Yep.
Um, okay, fine, then.
So on this one.
Fire District Five, anyone have any uh objection to the?
So I would move, we approve the request of Fire District number five with the understanding that Andy McCain would be the. Person um in charge of what supervising the. Meeting room and locking it up afterwards. He's a member of our planning commission.
Motion made and seconded. To give Fire District Five permission to use a meeting room. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are permitted.
Okay, well, there you go. So no. Uh so a few things to cover. Um we have uh. The sidewalk grant application, talked about at the last meeting. Um. I I had reached out to the planning commission. One of the members there is pretty good at helping with that, but he was unfortunately not able to do it, so I was, I got it together. And submitted it with about ninety seconds to spare. Um didn't hear anything for two days, got a little nervous, reached out to the guy. He's like, yep, forgot to tell you. I got it. So they have accepted the application. That's as far as we know at this point, so it was submitted, so. Uh for a grand total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh for, that's, that's for the construction and related costs for that.
This is JP's sidewalk.
JP Sidewalk, yep. So the grant's application is in, they have acknowledged receipt, and that's as far as we've gotten at this point.
Did you hear that, JP? You're responsible for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think he left. Yeah, he left.
He's sleeping as we speak.
I'll send him a note.
I got an email uh earlier this afternoon from our uh antivirus company. They have. Uh they believe they have successfully resolved the issue. Uh it was applied a couple patches ago, so we haven't seen anything since then, so. Uh hopefully Howard and Marshall should be all set. Uh and they asked if we see anything to let them know right away, but I haven't seen anything the last couple of days since they've applied it, so.
Beautiful.
That's good. Uh.
Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
As I should be all set. Uh C I C Health, which is the organization using the downstairs, should be wrapping up. Um early next week because the this, the the testing sites are all closing by the end of the month. Uh so their last day is either going to be Monday or Wednesday of next week. I'm not sure which yet, but um they said they'll take care of making sure the room is clean and. Done when they're done with it, but um they've been, they've been very busy down there when they, when they've been open, so. Uh so but they'll be wrapping up here uh in, by the end of next week. Uh so we do have the meeting tomorrow morning for the Post Road Water Line, so that's going to be. Our Highway Committee, Joe, our Water Sewer Committee, Kurt, myself, Dave, well, uh Robert Clark's going to be there. Uh their, their project person is going to be there, I forget his name, and also the, the contractor is going to be there. Bowen Excavating is going to be there too, so it should be a well attended meeting. Uh to go over that and and see where we're at, and we're hoping to like to get a, get an answer from Rutland City as to why we can't get the line shut off to put development. Um uh so we, that should be a, a good meeting tomorrow morning. Uh I did, did, we had those two. Uh companies that had not responded to our request for the sewer allocation. Um one of them, uh the, the. Somebody at the corporate office called me back. I spent a while on the phone, got that resolved. I've been, they include me in an email chain to get everything approved, so we should be getting that for. Hopefully here uh the next week or two, maybe for the next meeting, but they said they're underway. The other one I still have not heard from. Um but I sent them both certified letters. I've only gotten one. I haven't gotten their receipt back yet, so um but uh we're, we're making progress on that. And I. Couple last things. Uh one of the things we've been talking about over the past almost year is changing a lot of our internet and phone service townwide over to consolidated communications. Uh I've been working with uh my contact there and we've gotten a lot of it resolved. Uh there's a lot of details just in getting it done, so uh we, we probably will have. Uh contracts, either the next meeting or the meeting after for, for everybody to review and to approve. Um so I would be looking for that, but it's just coming, so we're, we're going to be adding internet to a couple sites with some future expansion anticipated. Especially around recreation, so uh some good stuff coming. Uh and the last thing I have is. On Don's desk, we have the form to approve switching the. Senior Municipal Official from Mary to Don for the Municipal Planning Grant for the Pocket Park. Uh we have to close the grant by the end of June, uh and there are not a lot of business days left to be able to do that. Uh so I I sent around an email, uh Don, because he's coming to sign it, but we got to get at least three of you to sign it to at least approve it. Uh but right now you're the municipal senior official.
I think we already did a motion at the last meeting to make Don the authorized person.
We, we, we had talked about it. I didn't know, I didn't, we, we talked about how to do it. We, we never, we, there's actually a form and.
I would so move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded to make the Chairperson of the Board responsible for the Pocket Park on the grant proposal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a vote and I have signed it. And what's this other regional?
Well, you gotta, yes, and then not for everybody's, everybody's got to sign it. That's a, that form to, to make you the person, person. We got to get everybody's signature on that, so that's important.
Do that. And what about this T A?
So what, we would talk to that real quick. Once, I'll get that to the, the state tomorrow. And once she has it changed, I gotta get you to log in because we're, you're the only one that can log in and do it and it's, it's not a intuitive system. Um but we'll get you.
You're saying it's not a digital friendly system to me.
Well.
And they don't call me Digital Don for nothing.
It's uh but we, 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 we got to close it out because we, we got it, we got to wrap it up by the end of June, so uh we'll have, I, I don't know the timeline to get you in there, but as soon as I have it, I'll let you know. Um, okay. All I got.
The transportation advisory council thing, is that?
That, that's up to you if you want. That's just, that's just there if you need to use it.
After Dave.
Yes.
Makes his decision.
That's, yeah.
Okay, so I have the forms, Dave, if you decide to.
And I, I think I have the agendas and some of the meeting minutes, so I'll kind of look forward to them. You had the meeting information, like what they talked about and stuff, but it's. It's, it's something that Byron already done in the past. It's, it's a, I think Joe, I don't know if Joe went to the, one of the meetings or not, but um, yeah, but. Is everything on my list?
Now, just a question, uh does anybody remember when we had? Either Byron or anybody else attending that. As, as that position, patient advisory council meetings. Was that a payment? Was that an additional payment? Like we pay our regional commission rep or?
Because I think it was. It's been a while since any, well, I don't know.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, uh listen, we, we try to be fair with everybody and.
Say, we probably should provide payment.
I would say it's uh at the rate of, it was thirty some odd, thirty two or thirty six, thirty eight dollars a meeting.
Thirty eight seventeen.
Yeah, thirty eight seventy. It's in the town report. Uh Dave, we have. We have various appointments that the board makes uh and. Those people that we appoint represent the town in various capacities on the Regional Commission and the ambulance service and so forth. And we're trying to make it consistent that they all get the same amount of, it's like a per diem payment for going, and it's just a really a thank you. It's not a lot of money, but. Still, uh what's fair is fair, so I would say that that would be included on there as well. If you need any more encouragement.
Bribery.
Whatever.
Keep, keep, keep going up with the price.
Yeah, there you go. So. Okay, committee meeting updates. Anybody?
Any else for me?
Uh you, are you, you all set?
Everything on my list, yeah.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Uh only that Scholarship Committee has discharged its duties for the year. Thank you both. Hoping out and. Yeah, you may thank me for putting up the sum, yes.
And I do, and I do.
Do you hear that?
And I do, I do, I do.
Make sure she'll extra late next time.
They're two wonderful stories.
And I'm going to open all the envelopes.
Of all the security improvements Bill has provided for the building, we haven't put a whining alert in yet. Next on the schedule.
Well, all I'm going to say is Sharon tried to open, she did open the envelope for one of the scholarship.
Oh my. She handed me. Just be quiet there for a minute and let me answer them. She hands me the envelope, so uh you know, I don't know. So she hands me this envelope, so I open it up because I thought. You know, there's going to be a check inside. There wasn't a bloody thing in there. The four kids, oh yes, you got this, but no money inside.
Announced her name. She's up there. She's shaking my hand. She's reaching for the o, the open envelope and Sharon's not giving it over. And she's saying, there's no check.
Now tell about Kurt. You got on my case. Tell about Kurt.
Well, you know, Kurt was, we, we're supposed to be there at a particular time, Rutland High School, and we, you know, they're, they run a tight ship there and. And I was there at the appointed time, half an hour early, and then fifteen minutes goes by, no Kurt, and then it's like five of. And there's no Kurt, and then they start pomp and circumstance. And all of the students marching, the very end of the line is somebody who's very tall and looks really familiar, and it's our Kurt. I thought he'd already graduated from Rutland High School, but there he is marching in with.
He just wanted to try it out again.
Just wanted to graduate again.
Yeah, yeah.
He did get applause when we mentioned he was class of two thousand fifteen, so that was good.
We had a house getting delivered in Brandon, so I was a little late.
Didn't it seem kind of neat, though, to go in to do that?
Oh, yeah.
That was nice.
That really is one of the most prideful things that you can do for this town. I mean, it really, it really does make your heart sing, you know.
I don't even know, I don't remember if I was at my senior award ceremony. I missed that one.
Where's that, where's that signature sheet? I just want to make sure I keep the pink folder complete. Thanks, Greg. There.
Damn phone. Him, watch, just talking to me.
Oh, I hear it talking all the time. Uh any other committee update reports?
Question for Bill, did we get the flyers back from the printer for townwide celebration?
Come and gone.
Okay, do we have some around here?
There's someone Kerry's office. There's some, I made copies. Uh they're at the pool as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any on the front table?
No, I, I, they're in Carrie's office. I, I, I have a copy in my office, you'll see it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy.
Yep.
Uh. All right, uh. Oh, um, what about uh? The circle, when is that doomed to be out? It's got to be pretty quick, congratulations coming up.
There was an issue. I, I was, I was a kind of an attached to the email, but Janelle said there was an issue with the printer and she was having to come pick them up and get them done, so I'm not sure exactly, but. There was, there was an issue and Janelle was like trying to get it done in the background, so.
So it's imminent.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. Uh, is there any old business to come before the board? Okay, uh, we've taken care of A and B. C, I have on my desk the highway garage heating system bids here, so. I. I don't know whether it's appropriate for us or do we, we let the Highway Committee handle this?
We open them.
We open.
And then usually they're referred to the Highway Committee to do the.
Okay.
Apples to oranges comparison.
All right, then we'll do that right now. We have apparently.
Would you like me to open the envelope? Because I'm good at opening.
I don't even have.
Come on, Kurt, I need somebody to stick up for me.
Got a letter opener?
You don't need one with me.
She did not.
Oh, she didn't.
You weren't there.
Yeah, well.
Listen, the child was happy at the end.
This is a bid from Fitzgerald Service LLC, Pleasant Street, West Rutland. Fitzgerald Services, Laboring Materials, eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This one is from. Johnson Energy. Total contract price, twelve thousand four. Hmm, I don't get this. Down payment sixty-two, uh, well, it's, it's twelve thousand four hundred totals. So twelve-four, eleven-two-fifty, twelve-four. And Bill Lowson Plumbing and Heating. Laboring Materials, thirteen thousand, one seventy-five. The apparent low bidder being Fitzgerald Services at eleven-two-fifty. And we will forward these to the Highway Committee.
Those in the folder. Fine.
Pardon me?
Put those in the folder. That'd be a good place for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
And. That completes the business at hand. Is there any other new business to come before the meeting? Is there any other new business to come before the meeting? Hearing none. Uh, need a short executive session.
Make a motion, we move to a short executive session.
Or a legal update.
Short, short executive session.
Short, short, for the purpose of.
With the purpose of a legal update.
Legal update.
On, on pending litigation.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well done. You must have graduated from high school.
I think that's.
There'll be no, there'll be no action after the meeting, um.
Regarding your Act two fifty complaint with um, Cortina, or is it something?
I can't hear you, Kurt.
That regarding your act two.
Yes.
Right there, I'm just.
Pardon me?
You vote on the motion?
Yes, did we? You voted on the motion?
I, I.
All of it. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good meeting.
Good meeting.